And have the pleasure of being a member of our COVID treatment quick start consortium. And we're going to get started on our learning network today. If we can go to the next slide. We're going to focus the conversation this morning on COVID testing and high risk populations. A few welcome and logistics notes. This is a regular Zoom conference that we're using, so everybody should be able to speak and turn their video on. Please stay muted unless you're speaking and please keep your camera on as we go. So that we can make this as engaged a conversation as we can. Please also take a moment to introduce yourself and your organizational affiliation in the chat. We want to make sure that we have an active chat with conversation with questions along the way. So use that chat function to ask questions anytime you'd like to provide comments. We'll be asking specific questions that we hope you'll all respond to in the chat. And we'll incorporate those into the discussion as we go. If you'd like to come into the conversation, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. And if you are providing a comment on screen, please try to keep those to a minute or less. So that we can keep the conversation moving. This is a public meeting. It is being recorded and it will be made available publicly. So that we can continue to share lessons learned with the broader community. With that, let me take one minute to set the context of who we are and where we are with the pandemic. So as I mentioned, we have the COVID treatment quick start consortium, which brings together Duke University, AmeriCares, the Clinton Health Access Initiative, and the COVID Collaborative as implementing partners with support from the Open Society Foundations, Pfizer and the Conrad and Hilton Foundation. Our goal is to help introduce and scale up access to new and effective COVID-19 oral antiviral therapies in partnership with governments and make those available as well as to undertake operational research to ensure that we're capturing and sharing lessons learned, which is another key aspect of this learning network model. We're going to start with some lessons learned in Zambia. And to set the context for that, if we take a step back and take a look at where we are with the COVID-19 pandemic and looking at the last four weeks, ending February 5th with the World Health Organization data. We can see that COVID certainly is not done or over with. That we're in the last four weeks seeing 10.5 million new cases, over 90,000 deaths, both of which are underestimates, we know just based on the data that's being reported. We are seeing increase in deaths in three WHO regions, in the Eastern Mediterranean, in the African region, and in the Americas. And a good bit of the global increases have been driven by recent developments in China. The good news is we are making modest progress in ensuring that test and treat capabilities and access to oral antivirals becomes much more globally and equitably available. Hetero has received WHO pre qualification for the first generic neomatravir, rotanavir combination as of December. And we are seeing multiple efforts in addition to our own quick start consortium, both from the US government through USAID, as well as through the multilaterals through level funding unitate. For a quick start, we're proud that Paxlovid has now been delivered to two countries, Zambia and Laos, and will be delivered to several more countries in the coming weeks. Our operational research is also well underway. And we have a commitment, as I mentioned, to continuing to develop and share insights and to provide this platform for all of you to be able to share your insights and raise common questions as well. So welcome and let's dive in first to understand the situation in Zambia and where product has started to be put to use, some early lessons learned. And to offer that, I'd like to welcome to this conversation Wamba Malenga, who's a senior associate with the Clinton Health Access Initiative. Over to you.
Thanks Krishna. Good afternoon. Good morning, everyone. So just we're taking through the Zambia experience. As Krishna has mentioned, Zambia was the first country to receive the Paxlovid under the Quick Start Consortium. We received our Paxlovid late December around 23rd. It was almost Christmas time, so you can imagine the office that even closed the time that we're receiving the Paxlovid. But one of the things around that time also that we had noted was the increase in terms of cases in Zambia. Our positivity rates drastically increased from around 1% to over 8%. So it meant that we did it quickly in getting the drug, not only in country, but to ensure that the sites that had been selected to be part of the distant treat were activated. So immediately we received, we did against the ministry. As we imagine, we needed to sort of like drum up a demand for the drug. It's the first time that we're receiving this drug. So we did have the Minister of Health during a press briefing announced to the country that we had received Paxlovid to help with those that were at risk of developing severe disease. As a country that also moved ahead to update the COVID guidelines during that includes test and treat models. So this was an opportunity for us to activate the sites. I think the support from Chinese leadership were able to get things started. So what we needed to do was to orient the sites. Of course, our target under Quick Start was that we initially activate 15 sites. At that time, it was not possible. Like I mentioned, our office was closed. We needed to get the team together, but we needed to identify some of the sites where we're seeing an increase in terms of cases. So we activated three sites, which included the highest site in the hospital, the university hospital. Where we oriented, we did a non-site orientation of staff there. We did also implement development, provide some of the monitoring and evaluation tools that were needed to ensure that what documented whatever it is that was happening in these sites. Also quickly managed to get the mortgage to those sites within a week. This required coordination between partners from the ministry, other implementing partners as well as ourselves. But the quick work that was done through the team ensured that we had the drug available in the sites a week after it landed in the country. I think from then on, we had even started initiating patients on the Paxlovid identifying. So one of the things maybe that I also want to highlight is one of the models that we did develop was a hospital based model. And what we did was identify what were the entry points where we're able to identify those that are at risk of developing severe disease. So we did identify clinics such as the NCT clinics, where you find those that are coming for diabetic clinics, those that are coming for hypertensive clinics and were able to identify these at testing points. But as well as also being able to train healthcare workers within the same departments to be able to offer the Paxlovid. We identified other entry points such as the outpatient departments, the HIV clinics, as well as the TB clinics. In the previous response, we had established what we're calling post-active COVID clinics. These are the clinics that we are using to not only manage those that were testing positive, but those that were coming up for follow-ups. So this was a good basis for us to activate as well as to ensure that we met follow-ups. What are some of the lessons that we bent in the initial phase out? The importance is of having a coordinating team. So within the sites, we have identified what we're calling COVID-19 focal point persons who are coordinating their activities. So from patient identification, they make sure that the team that is responsible for testing is doing the testing. The team that is supposed to do the linkage, they're doing the linkage and to just ensure that we're capturing the data as we are initiating. As I speak, I think through the 13 sites that have activated so far, we have managed to reach over 400 patients with Paxlovid. We are now just beginning to go through the data to see what are some of the gaps that we are noticing within the data and how can we better use these models to identify as well as being those at risk of developing severe, severe disease. We are waiting to receive some data, especially you know Zambia is one of those countries that is high burden for HIV. We're trying to see from the sites, we're trying to get information on how they've been able to do this in HIV clinics and will be able to share at a later form. So so far, what I can say is Zambia is well ahead and what we're seeing, we like what we're seeing so far. And we have received support from the Ministry of Health and the special thanks to Sean, the team there. Really been very helpful. In terms of the study, I think we're almost getting there with getting the protocol approved. I should be able to share our data with the outside world. I know everybody is excited and waiting to see what Zambia is doing. Thanks and I want to Krishna.
Well, but thank you so much. Fantastic to hear the early progress and the lessons learned. We have a few minutes. If anybody wants to chime in with questions, please use the chat function or raise hand function as well in Zoom and happily bring you in. As we're waiting for that, thank you for sharing the lessons learned as you've done here. I can like to maybe get us started by asking you about the demand generation activities. In particular, you mentioned the press briefing, the visibility from Minister of Health down. What other mechanisms have been used, especially to focus on generating demand in country?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the question. So in addition to that press brief, we did identify a team of experts. Was from CHAI as well as Ministry of Health and the Zambia National Public Health Institute that went around and did some radio programs as well as TV programs, funny in programs where the community can call in and ask more questions about the distant treat program. So through that Krishna, we generated so much demand that we're now working to die down that demand. Because there's so much demand from the community, everybody was what all tested positive wanted to be dispensed with Paxlovid. Even those that were not HIV, but they were putting pressure on the healthcare workers to say, we heard about this drug. How can I access this drug? So in terms of demand generation, I think the team did very well. We did generate enough demand.
Thank you. Very important point here. And I think one that continues to be actively discussed at all levels nationally, regionally, globally about the issue of of demand, several questions that have come in. Let me first bring in Perry Kent, Nicole, if you want to unmute yourself and turn on your video if you can and ask your question.
Thank you so much and hello, everyone. I hope you can hear me. My full name is Perry Kent and Colley. I'm based in Zambia, but I work with the African Alliance. And we've been implementing, we're in the process of beginning to fully implement a project called Ports to Arms, which intends to, you know, use a community led, you know, monitoring approach to engage communities and gathering data around, you know, barriers and inhibitors of COVID-19. But also I think just to emphasize and echo what, you know, Mwaba has just said. One of the strides that were made by Zambia, based on some of the research that we did during the piloting of the research tools that we did for the Ports to Arms project. We were able to recognize that one of the things that helped countries like Zambia, for instance, to make great progress with regards to COVID vaccines is taking a multi stakeholder approach, multi sectorial approach where the private sector, civil society organizations, and of course, the government, you know, does come in. One point I want to emphasize is the fact that we can't leave communities behind when it comes to ensuring that we implement these strategies of getting, you know, COVID vaccines to the people. Communities have to be involved at every stage when it comes to, you know, gathering data, but also getting the vaccines to people. So we've realized as opposed to arms that there are a number of barriers that prevent vaccines from moving from ports to arms. And it is important for us to take a community, you know, led monitoring approach and ensuring that we gather, you know, the correct data. And we bring the realities and experiences of this community to the surface as we begin to address these barriers. So a great presentation by Malenga and of course Zambia stands out. But let's not forget countries like, you know, Burundi that are on 0.2% when it comes to COVID vaccinations right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Critical point around taking both multi sectoral approaches and making sure that communities really are at the center of all of this work. So thank you. Fantastic. We've got a few questions here on chat that I'll come to next. And maybe I'll ask a couple of them for you to address. First, do you have dedicated staff for this program or is it integrated into regular care? And then maybe related to that, are there efforts to make sure that we are trying to find the highest risk populations, the older patients with symptoms? What's happening around risk stratification there?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for those two questions. So in terms of dedicated staff, I think from the word was we're designing, it's one of the issues that we're looking at was that of sustainability. If we are to employ staff, what happens beyond that? I think the idea of these test and treat projects is sustainability, use the existing resources. So what we did was, like I said, from the get-go, we did engage all the partners, those that are supporting Ministry of Health, CDC, WHO, PEPFA, and another partners that have invested resources within the government. So what we are using now are not any dedicated staff, but the resources we've been, so it's a Ministry of Health staff and another staff that are supported by other partners. As the Quick Start Consortium, we have not employed anyone. Of course, for the purposes of the study, we will be getting in some data collectors just to help with the data collection for the purposes of the study. But in terms of implementation of the Quick Start program, we are just using Ministry of Health staff. Sorry Krishna, I missed the second question.
Sure, around risk stratification and efforts to reach high risk patients, especially perhaps older patients with symptoms.
Thank you very much for that question. And like I mentioned, there's so much demand in the beginning, especially from healthcare workers. And we saw that if we don't deliberately look for those that are at risk, we end up dispensing this drug to those people that don't even need it. So one of the, one of the strategies that we have used as a country is we sort of like did update the guidelines to include every, the risk factors. What, who are those that are at the highest risk? And then what we have also gone further to do is even.
Should we lose Mwaba or is that on my end?
No.
Okay. Let's give him just a few more seconds here. See, it's reconnected. Maybe having some connection issues there as I did and dropped off. Let's keep going. We'll bring Mwaba back into the conversation as he's able to rejoin. But Mwaba, thank you so much for getting to hear us. That was fantastic update on work that's being done. And I think exactly the sort of frontline experience that we need to be learning from as we go. We're certainly not going to change topics entirely. And we're going to try to bring in some of the same questions and content into our next conversation, which really is going to now focus on testing and the role of testing and the availability, especially around this idea of of high risk populations, which as we know has been underused almost in every country around the world, but certainly in almost all low and middle income countries. And to help us introduce the speakers and moderate this conversation, I'd love to bring in Ashley Kalarakal, who's the Country Support Manager for the Clinton Health Access Initiative. Ashley, over to you.
Hi, thanks Krishna. I hope everyone can hear. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening. My name's Ashley. I'm on the global diagnostics team at CHAI and here to facilitate this conversation, which I think actually goes really nicely following the updates from Mwaba and thinking about how exactly our testing programs are able to access those that or able to identify those that need to access life-saving treatment. So I'll just do some very quick stage setting, but looking forward to hearing from our speakers and panelists. As everyone knows, we've really come a long way since 2020. Testing has evolved alongside the policies that countries had prioritized to respond to COVID in their own country context. We saw previously testing primarily focused on rapid isolation of suspected cases to really inform individuals of their status in the hopes that that information was sufficient for a change in their behaviors and ideally the reduction of further transmission. In some of our quick start countries, we saw testing even expanded beyond that, beyond just testing suspected symptomatic cases to including required testing elements for cases like international domestic travel, sometimes even before large meetings and events and others alike. But in the last year, we've seen these testing strategies shift or start to shift to account for the availability of treatment. Testing services now have a very clear additional objective. Which is that we need to be able to test the right people at the right time so that they're able to actually get the drugs that they need in an effective way. So today we have three different panelists that will speak a bit more about how they've approached testing thus far and how they're thinking about moving it forward. Just for very quick introductions, first we have Silver Machete from the African Societies for Laboratory Medicine. He is a biomedical laboratory scientist by training with over 15 years of field experience conducting implementation science for health system strengthening. And he has made significant contributions to the rollout of antigen rapid tests across many of the African Union member states through supporting development of strategic guidance documents and resources for capacity building around the quality of COVID testing delivery. We then have Catherine Akoy, who's a senior technical advisor to the Director General at Nigeria's Center for Disease Control and Prevention. She is a medical laboratory scientist by profession and a molecular microbiologist by training. She manages currently the COVID-19 related laboratory activities at NCDC's reference lab and across the full network of COVID testing facilities in Nigeria. And then lastly, we have Dr. Alexander Martin Odom, who is a clinical virologist with over 20 years of diagnostics related experience. He's currently a senior technical advisor with CHAI's Ghana team. And he is on the treatment access team, looking specifically at diagnostics and implementation research. So with that, I think we can kick off our discussion. And I'd like to start by asking our speakers to share their reflections on the evolution of testing in the last year, given preparation for treatment availability. And maybe we can start with Silver from ASLM. Over to Silver.
Thank you so much colleagues and I hope you can hear me this evening. And this afternoon, I've been having trouble with connectivity. And it's likely to be very difficult to put on my video, apologies for that. And actually, please confirm if you can actually hear me. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great. So colleagues, it's so exciting to be part of this discussion. And indeed, we are all aware of how the COVID-19 pandemic has actually revolutionized some of the concepts of science in the last two years. And in the interest of time, we need to focus on the issue with testing. We know a lot has changed. And in the last one year, we could say, of course, a lot happened even before that. That one of the cornerstones of the response to this pandemic actually, as said by Dr. Tedros, the head of WHO, was that the best thing we can do is actually to test and test and test more people. You cannot fight our blindly. And for that reason, many, many, many different aspects of how do we increase access to testing in our communities? Many things have been happening. So what are some of the things that have been happening in the last one year? One, we need to appreciate the element of community. And I think the previous discussions have really talked about community involving all the stakeholders. A lot has changed at the community level. And what do we mean with this? Initially, remember when COVID-19 started, anybody who, for example, have symptoms and be tested positive, the whole community would actually know. But this is a time where now people have realized that you can test positive, but it's not guaranteed that you are going to die. So this means communities now are able to access testing without fear. But for us to be able to do that, the bigger issue that has changed the last period of one year is that the issue to do with the policy and governance. Many of the policy and guidelines that the countries had initially did not recognize that, for example, you could have the antigen arrhythmia testing happening at community level or being performed in facilities where there is no biosafe level three testing. So countries have now had transition ever since the Global World Health Organization showed us the use of antigen arrhythmia. That now testing can happen in a level one facility, not necessarily at a biosafe level three facility. So that's at police level. When it comes to some of the things that have happened in terms of how we manage the testing, it is now targeting the testing that we are guiding to go through. One of the things that you realize formally, anybody who would be symptomatic and anybody who was a contact of a positive person would be recommended for testing. But currently, what has been the shift we have seen the last one year is that we have had policy guidance in terms of testing has to be targeted. And some of the priority groups have been classified and communicated to the different stakeholders. And these are some of the groups that we think we need to focus on where testing has happened. For example, testing now should be on people who are actually presenting with the symptoms. We know that COVID-19 presents a wide range of symptoms, but who are symptomatic? We have another category of people who are elderly. Those should be prioritized for COVID-19 testing. Even for testing for investigation for other cases. Because other diseases such as HIV or TB or cancer, they should be prioritized for testing as compared to before, yeah, everybody will be tested. And then people have underlying conditions like diabetes and other special clinics. So you realize that now the testing from policy level, policies have been revised by countries. And now we are saying, let's have testing happening at strategic, sorry, at prioritized by prioritizing patients as opposed to previously. So those are some of the changes that we are seeing. And one of the things that we will be seeing is that people still are reducing their demand for testing for the different reasons. I think we shall be discussing this in the. But I think for now, let me stop here to allow my colleagues to discuss our COVID testing, prioritizing testing and having different groups. And of course, this has been influenced by other factors such as vaccination, where people feel like they are safer. And therefore, they are not really scared of the pandemic. So let me stop here for now, Ashley, and then my colleagues to further unpack some of those high level points that I've highlighted. Thank you over to Ashley.
Thanks Silver. And just to add, I think Silver, you're being a bit humble. I know ASLM has worked really closely with Africa CDC to revise some of the testing strategies over the course of the pandemic that a number of AU member countries adopt or adapt to their country context. So I know Silver's been driving some of these conversations around how to go about making this shift. And so just wanted to highlight that expertise in the room. I guess now we can hear from Dr. Catherine. Catherine, are you on the line?
Yes, please. I'm on the line. So good afternoon, everyone. And thank you, Ashley, for the introduction. And I'm also happy to be here on the call to share the experiences of Nigeria on how we've shifted with testing in the last one year. So again, during the introduction, particularly work at the Nigerian Center for Disease Control. And we all know that this is the national institute in the country that is charged with the mandate to lead the preparedness, detection and response to public health emergency. So consequently, we continue to monitor the epidemiology of COVID-19, including genomic data for better response to the pandemic. So in the last one year, actually, quite a couple of things have changed a bit, starting with updating our national guideline to include some form of sustainability to how we respond to COVID. Because initially, what we did was to just focus on testing for COVID. And it was actually tested as a standalone. But as time went on, we noted the reason for integrating testing into our disease surveillance. And we are really glad that with quite a couple of guidelines updated, working in collaboration with partners like WHO, CHAI, CDC, African CDC, ASLM, all those guidelines have been put in place. And we are now looking at integrating COVID-19 testing right from the community levels. And this is really critical because we know initially you test, like Silver said, the test, test, test approach, yeah. After that, you isolate. And yes, critical situations are treated, but now we are integrating testing to ensure everybody tested at the community level. And it's positive, it's reached out to ensure they are properly treated. So this is linking testing to healthcare and treatment, which is really, really critical. And how do we integrate this? So at the community levels, we have really great existing healthcare systems and structures. Again, working in collaborations. Again, working in collaborations, in collaboration with partners. So these healthcare systems and structures already existing, for example, we have that for the A T N S, it's tobacco losses and malaria. So this platform, which is already working very well, now serves as the platform which we can integrate this, you know, COVID nineteen testing. And how do we use this? We use this in a bidirectional system. And what does that really mean? It means if you go to the healthcare center where you find a doctor after his triage, you now ensure if you come up with respiratory diseases, how you also include COVID nineteen as one of the testing. So you see the bidirectional or the integrated system uses the bidirectional platform to ensure this integrated testing goes on. And for we back in Nigeria, we've noted there is no way going forward. You would treat any disease as a standalone. And this has really enabled us to update guidelines and policies to ensure COVID nineteen testing is integrated. Some other thing we've learned in just the near future or in recent times is also using the effort of self-testing. We also incorporated that a bit in our national testing strategy. However, we have not really brought for data that will also show the interoperability of the system going forward with issues like quality management systems. How do you assure the quality of the sample the person took for themselves? What about the quality of the result? Is it even loaded on the national data tool, which is a surveillance outbreak response management analysis system Nigeria uses to collect all their data? So all these are issues we have to deal with. But then we are also noticing a reason or a need to ensure we deliver some form of data to talk on the acceptability and interoperability of this system with COVID nineteen testing as time goes along. So there is a great need for people who have been diagnosed of COVID to be treated. And I know our partners like CHI are making sure, putting forth guidelines and all sorts of procedures to ensure these medications come in countries that we can cater for both the really severely sick and even those who are asymptomatic to take this treatment so that they don't progress to severe disease and even death as a case may be. So let me stop here and if there are any questions to answer or here from colleagues and I can continue with further questions if there are. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine, for that. I think we'll come to questions from the audience soon. It's great to hear how in Nigeria, there really is this shift in line with some of the strategies and objectives we hear in the global health space around integrated holistic patient-centered service delivery that we're thinking about the individual and all of the reasons why they may need to access certain types of screening or diagnosis. And that's being identified at their points of, at various points of entry. And through strategies like bidirectional screening, we're really able to provide an integrated approach, hopefully leveraging some of the efficiencies that are needed. And in the case of COVID, finding people quickly. I think with that, actually, let's hear from Dr. Alex in Ghana and just get one more country perspective on on testing and the evolution in the last year. Dr. Alex, over to you.
Hi, everybody. Thank you very much, Ashley, for the introduction. I hope my voice is coming out clear. Ashley can hear me. Okay, good. So Ghana has virtually similar story to tell along with the other countries that have spoken so far, that just that there are some specifics that are a bit different. Now, when COVID hit the country in twenty twenty, we were slow on starting up. We didn't really have any policy guidelines in place. So the immediate reaction was for the two research facilities of two of our universities who had to take the brunt of the whole pandemic and begin to test for P C R to give us the results to even be able to know what we're facing. However, we ran the country running around quickly and with support from CHI, policies, the guidelines were developed. We didn't have any antigen policies, so we came up onto the antigen system slightly behind every other country. But when we kicked in with support from CHI, we got the antigen guidelines developed and then began to work on, on, on the policy to be able to test quickly because it was obvious testing was a solution to, to battling this pandemic. So as, as a time now, initially, we actually put up a system such that every facility that was testing had to be accredited by our regulators. So we had a system that could be regulated and through facilities that we are allowed to do the testing on the molecular side, P C R had to be particularly validated and be agents validated before they could even start. But when the antigen policy was launched, the same facilities had to be used. So we were able to quickly rally around and then the antigen policy enabled the country to test a lot more. Now, with the turnaround time that was longer with P C R was made less less impacted in that the antigen was faster turnaround. And where we needed to, we used the P C R just for confirmation. Having said that, it means that Ghana was able to test a lot faster and a lot more despite the initial stigma of somebody being positive with COVID because of the whole impact that COVID had. The antigen testing enabled more people to be tested, enabled the country to really monitor who comes into the country and who is tested and the positive cases. We started such that every positive case was linked to treatment from the, even during the pandemic. So it was such that when you test positive, the P C R based antigen immediately, the testing facility links you to health facility. And this was made possible because we were using the storma's data platform to link every patient that was positive to the, the treatment side. And then the national coordinating team can, can determine where there is a positive person so that they'll be tracking to make sure that treatment was being assessed. So that actually did a lot for our system and we're still keeping that. Over the last year, antigen testing has taken over completely from P C R testing. P C R has been relegated to just being necessary if there is any doubt in, in the scenario that you have. So more, more of antigen testing. And then most people could easily go into any facility, private and public, that is accredited and can test. That also means that the Ministry of Health, within agency Ghana Health Service and its public health directory were able to spread out the testing to the far-reaching areas, the district and the sub-districts. Even to the maternity or the chip compounds. This was made possible with the help of CHI because CHI led it and was training all the medical laboratory personnel down in all these facilities. So across our sixteen regions, the medical laboratory scientists were all trained in the regional hospitals and they cascaded it down to the sub-districts, even to the chip compound. So it gave us a very strong position to be able to test as far as possible. That really helped in reducing the, the fear of getting COVID. As we, as we stand now, we've been able to test as many as two point five million cases. And the positive cases now came up to about one hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and fifty-two. So basically, testing has improved tremendously in the last one year. And much as we are looking forward to bringing in the treatment, what the country is looking to do is to focus on high-risk areas like the diabetic clinic, hypertensive clinic, the cardio centers, the older generation, fifteen years up, people with underlying comorbidities. So for, for Ghana, we're looking to initiate the past move it quick start and test, test and treat program. We are, we are, we are so far done with our O I R V. We are waiting for the first tranche of the drug to come in country probably in four to five weeks. But the underground work has been done, the sites have been selected and we are virtually ready to go as soon as the drugs hit the country. We are waiting for a week or so, we'll carry out the testing, the training of the trainers so that we'll be ready as soon as the drug hits the country. And then we do, we activate all the sites across the country. And then five of these regions will be where we'll use O R to enable us to proceed on the research aspect. I think I'll pause here and then if there are any questions towards that direction, we'll take it as we go. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Alex. I think just in the interest of time, we do want to move to the Q and A. Let's see, I'm trying to also open the chat on my phone to see where which questions, I don't know if Lisa or Sean, you're also able to help facilitate the Q and A if there are certain ones coming in from the audience.
Yep, not, not yet, Ashley, but I will flag, flag as they come in. So yeah, just a reminder to everyone to ask your questions in chat or raise your hand or we also would love to hear from you in terms of your experiences with testing and lessons learned. Okay, I think we have Harry Kent and Brooke who have their hands raised, Ashley.
Great, go ahead.
Brooke, do you want to go first and then Perry Kent over to you?
Okay, so, so my question is, is focused more on what we might call even lower level community-based testing through use of community health workers and self-testing. I think most of what we've heard about is admirable achievement in rolling out facility-based testing and beginning to move towards outpatient treatment with antivirals for high-risk populations. And, and basically, you know, having testing available for people who may show up, not necessarily because of COVID symptoms, but, but through other sources of regular care for HIV or hypertension or whatever. But we know that many people will not come to a facility just to get tested if they begin to get a sore throat or cough or whatever. Because it's, it's cost, it's costly and takes, it takes a lot of time. And that's particularly true for older people who, for whom travel is that much more difficult and, and quite often live in, in more rural settings. So I, I just wonder what people are thinking about the, the, the efforts to get testing out into the community more directly, particularly, as I said, to community health workers. And also making tests available to the highest risk population, which frankly is elder patients and particularly elder patients with certain comorbidities. And, and really not, not depending almost exclusively on people who pitch up at facilities and, and are identified that way. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Brooke, you raised a, is it okay? Comment on that. Thanks.
Yeah, please, Silver, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. Thank you so much, Brooke. I think you raised a very, very important point and indeed have that challenge. It says that people would only like to go to a facility when they're testing these communities. And that's why we highlighted and committed on the issue of engagement of the communities. And I think our colleague from Zambia talked about the stakeholder engagement. So one of the things that we have tried to do is make recommendations to countries because currently part of my responsibility is to work with countries to adapt or adopt some of these initiatives. Is that to focus on the community, particularly strengthen the communication bit where we need to have a sensitization of the communities, develop and implement communication campaigns, for example, to increase population awareness about the need for COVID nineteen testing. That is one of the interventions that we're making recommendations to countries as a way of creating demand for people not to wait until they are really sick. And this has also worked in other programs like HIV and AIDS, which have been, which has been here with us for about three decades. And some of those initiatives actually worked. So we also thinking, how can we write on that to ensure that we reach these communities with testing as opposed to waiting for them at the facilities? The other recommendation that we have seen other countries take on is task shifting. And this has also worked very well in the T P programs and HIV programs. And we are recommending to borrow some of those initiatives which have worked. What do we mean by task shifting? That we already have in some countries, they're called village health teams. In some countries, they are called community extension workers. They are given basic competencies on how to identify, either carry out these immunizations or give ant-malaria. So instead of reinventing the wheel, these people are given competencies to be able to identify some of the symptoms of COVID nineteen or identify who are at risk and they're able to conduct even the antigen R A B T testing. Because they are already doing it for other tests like R A B T is for malaria and some of these like HIV. So using the same people, giving them capacities on identifying the symptomatic, the rapid testing. Those are some of the approaches I think to reach out to the communities. We have seen in some countries where testing through what some countries call outreach, community outreach, there are communities which are vulnerable, like internally displaced places, camps, like where there are refugees. In places where we have congregated communities like in prisons, where they have said now to put like testing for especially who are coming in. So this is just reaching out to some of these facilities. Access to services is not just really available. But like we have highlighted in the beginning, given that the ideology of the pandemic itself has changed so much, the demand generally has gone low. So we need to engage the communities, improve on our communication, sensitization, and even community leaders to ensure that they reach out to people. There may be no straight line approach, but it has to be managed by community by community. So some, those are some of the initiatives that we are thinking of. And I'm glad you brought this up. Of course, they're not forgetting the issue of self-testing, where now we're having on the market self-testing kits where somebody can walk into a pharmacy and use those kits. But again, we have a responsibility to make sure that whatever kit is on the market is actually of quality. And also, do people use the results if they are positive? Are they able to seek for healthcare? Sorry, for treatment, like we are already discussing issues of treatment. So those are some of the comments I can provide, but thank you so much, Brooke, for raising that. Over to you, Ashley, and maybe for other colleagues also to add. Thank you.
Thanks, Silver. I think we may be, I don't know, do we have one more question? Lisa, looking to you.
I think we have time probably for one or two more questions, depending upon how quickly. So I guess Perry Kent, do you want to ask your question? And then I guess panelists, if you could respond to Diana's question in chat, just in case we run out of time, please.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'll be very quick, Perry Kent, once again, from the African Alliance. And thank you so much for that presentation on the revolution of testing. My question is around, you know, the use of data in enabling us to be able to best prepare for future pandemics. My question is on what efforts are being put in place to ensure that we authenticate and we decolonize data in Africa and create systems that enable the designing of national strategies in line with, you know, the experiences, but also the data from the ground. Even the use of technology and innovation should be able to speak to the needs and, you know, concerns of the different communities that are affected. And of course, just to chip in a recommendation on demand creation, it would be very useful. it would be very useful for us to consider using community influencers uh to be able to uh you know, be able to um get the much-needed results around testing, but also treatment around COVID nineteen. So by uh uh you know, influencers, we mean people who are gatekeepers within the communities who have um some level of influence uh with the community. So a question on what efforts are being used to ensure that we uh make use of uh accurate, authenticated and decolonized data to ensure that even as we're designing national strategies, it speaks to the realities um on the ground. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure, maybe I could comment on that, the issue of data. Um this is Silver. That is very pertinent, Mr. Colley, because uh one of the challenges and bottlenecks we have seen across many of the EU member states is the issue of data management. In fact, it's one of the reasons we think we cannot be very confident to say we have tested enough because the data is so fragmented. And at times it never reaches the national level to guide planning. So this is work in progress. We have supported through the Global Fund Project in some countries, supporting initiatives and interventions to conduct data integration systems such that we have interoperability, interoperability between systems. What we learned from when COVID nineteen started is that you would have different data collection tools and reporting tools for the survey surveillance team, you'd have different systems for the laboratory testing team and also different tools for people who are doing case management and even in their community level. And this is that I would not communicate one another and there was a lot of confusion. And this still lingers on, but now we are advocating for having systems that are actually integrated. When you hear from our colleagues from, I think, Ghana and Nigeria, talk about systems like Somas, where we are trying to say, can we have systems that when you use them, you are able to report the data in real time, either using your digital device and all that? So that's still a challenge, but it's work in progress. There is a lot of effort to ensure that we improve on that. And I think it was, this was also mentioned at the beginning, we are now focusing on integration. We should not be setting up vertical systems for that reporting for no COVID. This should be in an uh uh and in 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 terms of integrated approach. So this is work still going on and we hope that uh things will improve along the way. Yeah, and uh and maybe before my colleague Catherine comes in, there was a question in the chat where a colleague asked that what would members of the panel please share what you are doing to reach out to immunosuppressed individuals with testing? So the recommendations that we have given to countries and countries have already decided is essential to to ensure that testing is available in these clinics where the people with immunosuppressed conditions are actually go. That is one step. The other step is to provide competences to the health service providers as they go through their routine consumer as medical education, they are given trainings and how to identify signs and symptoms of COVID. So part of the criteria that has been included in some of these guidelines of managing these people is screening for COVID nineteen. So these are some of the recommendations that are put out there, but countries are adapting and adopting them differently. Thank you. Maybe allow my colleague Catherine to say something she has. Thank you. Bye.
Thanks very much, Silver, for that um response. Uh so one thing I want to say here is, and I'm really excited about it. Nigeria has really done a great job on um data reporting. So like I said, we use Somas. And initially, it was really difficult, but again, I have colleagues online um who can add to that. But then there was a system created whereby if you you request for consumables and you don't provide a utilization of reports, no more um you know, no more kits or consumables were given to you. So uh the DJ ensured every form of testing that is done, whether from molecular or from rapid diagnostic testing, this was entered in real time onto the Somas. It's not been an easy process, but I'm just excited to say that more and more awareness is being created. And right now, as we speak, COVID nineteen has already been integrated into our IDSR, which is really a good thing for seeing that it's a reportable disease. So this is one of the efforts that has been done in really recent times to ensure we use data that is reported to inform public health decisions and control measures. Um yeah, this is what I want to say here for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine, for that. And thanks, Silver. I think just in the interest of time, um I want to take a moment to thank all of the panelists and speakers for the insights that you've shared on the evolution of testing over the last year, as well as some of the reflections on, you know, what is still needed to ensure that testing is delivered to those high-risk populations. I think from the questions in the chat and the questions from the audience, we've also been able to hear or start to think about how tests may need to be adjusted in a way that we are reaching those high-risk populations, especially community settings. So I'm excited to see how this evolves in the next year alongside the availability of treatment. I think with that, I'm over to you, Krishna, for the last few minutes. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ashley. Uh fantastic conversation. I'll also add my thanks to uh all the speakers. Good conversation today, obviously a lot more um needs to be done and and we want to continue this conversation over time. But uh just to try to hit some of the highlights, you know, we talked about the importance of integration that the programs for test and treat can't work uh sustainably as standalone programs. So how do we integrate this as effectively as possible? Um secondly, we talked about the importance of identifying and reaching high-risk and priority populations uh all through the use of guidelines, through the use of uh operational uh priorities to make sure that the right facilities, the right community-based models of of reaching people are are put in place. Third, we really honed it on the importance of communities, both as community-driven priorities being important community aspects of accountability, uh but also the the need to engage with communities to uh to build not just awareness, but to generate demand and using multi-stakeholder and multi-sector engagement approaches to do that. We also talked about how important access to testing is and especially decentralized self-testing as a model that we've got to evolve to as quickly as possible. And then finally, we talked about how important it is to make sure that we are capturing uh and sharing the data and evidence and insights coming from this as we continue to evolve models over time. Um so uh again, uh to end, let me thank uh all of our uh speakers and participants. Waba, Ashley, Silver, Catherine, Alex, thank you all. Uh huge thanks to the Quick Start team that uh has uh kept this conversation going and puts these uh sessions together. We will be all back together next month for the next uh learning network. You can find the recording of this session, the last session from December, as well as uh any other information you want from the Quick Start Consortium. Uh covidquickstart.org is the website to find all of that information. So thank you all and have a good morning, afternoon, or evening, wherever you may be in the world.